Gray.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Milton.
Here.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the pledge and imocation by Councilman Chris Jerem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd just like to take a minute to reflect on your thanks that in our community whenever we have such important civic projects that there's been this openness willing us to work together in community spirit with both the public and private, filling the rapids communities that we can achieve great things in the city.
Thanks.
City clerk certified publication of data record on September 20th, notice for pre-council regular city council meeting, or pre-council regular city council meeting September 24th, current copy of openings act is posted in white binder on the East Wall of Legislature Chamber.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Zoning ordinance on final ring planning board attachments, item number five, ordinance to rezone property located at 3201 South 24th Street from R7 to CC Community Commercial District, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number five is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One second.
Roll call.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to none.
Item six and seven are one case. Six is ordinance to rezone property located northwest to 57th Street and northwest radial highway from R435, single-family residential district, high density, and general commercial district to community commercial district. Seven is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate in that district the property located northwest of 57th Street and northwest radial highway. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearings on items number six and seven are today. Mr. Jobin.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of Bucks Inc. with me today. From Bucks Inc. is John Pearlback. The approvals that we're seeking today are rezoning from R435 in GC to CC with a MCC overlay. The rezoning request that's before you today is consistent with the future land use map of the city's master plan. I wanted to go through the existing conditions and show you what currently exists there today. It's about 2.48 acres in which I've outlined the proposed development site here. It's a little dark on the north side here. It's about 2.48 acres. There currently exists a 21,789 square foot building here, which was the former Louis' Market, and then there's a 4,260 square foot restaurant bar on the site, and then there's also an ATM. The other thing I'd call your attention to is the fact that the intersection or the entryway into the site is very, very close to the intersection of 58th Street and northwest radial highway. So what's being proposed today with this particular rezoning is a 6,800 square foot C store with an attached 2,300 square foot car wash in the back. And what you'll notice also from this particular site plan is that the driveway into the site has been pushed back to the north about 60 feet from the intersection of 58th, the northwest radial highway, which is a much safer, much better condition. It was talked about at one point as to why this driveway couldn't be pushed back further to the north. It just can't because of the grade change or the elevation change of the property. So that's the best we could do as far as pushing that driveway back to the north. Also, with respect to the site regulators with the MCC overlay district on top, the urban design code, of course, kicks in, and so you have certain things that the developer is not only willing to do but required to do as part of the urban design code. Number one, there's, you have this retaining wall because of the grade change on the northeast side of the project. We are complying and the developer is complying with the height restrictions on the retaining wall. So you have five feet up, five feet over, five feet up, five feet over. So we're in compliance with the urban design code with respect to the retaining wall. Also, there's a six-foot-high hedge that's being planted and installed along the northeast side of the property as well. And then we have a 15-foot buffer yard requirement along northwest radial highway and then a 30-foot buffer yard on the other three sides of the development. But in actuality, they've exceeded those buffer yard requirements pretty significantly. For example, on, along northwest radial highway, it ranges anywhere from 15 feet, which is the minimum, all the way up to 61 feet as far as the buffer yard along northwest radial. As far as 58th Street, it ranges from 30 feet to 61 feet buffer yard along 58th Street. And along 57th Street, it goes from 31 feet to 115 feet in this particular area as far as the buffer yard is concerned. And then, of course, in the back, it goes from 30 to 43 feet along the north boundary line of the site. Also, with respect to the building materials with the urban design code, it has to meet certain minimum building requirements and building materials. This is a front elevation of the proposed store. And of course, again, with the urban design code, you have the four-sided architectural requirements, and so the, what that means is the building materials have to be substantially similar on all four sides of the structure. So this is the rear elevation, and this is the right elevation or the east elevation, and then this is the west elevation. And I do have a sheet also showing the material choices that are going into the building, their aluminum, stacked stone, their brick, their ephesus or some other similar material, of course, glass, and then there's some aluminum, and then a copper-like metal on these canopies here and in here and here. Obviously, the owner-operator will have to comply with the lighting ordinance, the noise ordinance. And lastly, this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the planning department as well as the planning board. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have and/or respond to any opposition that might be here today as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you know, I will have a number of questions for you.
Yes.
But let's have other proponents speak if there is any here today. Seeing no other proponents, are there any opponents that want to speak?
My name is Patricia Anderson, and my address is 2923 North 58th Street.
Slide over a little bit more so that you're between the microphones.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
My neighbor is Rachel Howell. She lives next door to me at 2927 North 58th Street. And because she will be making more or less the same statement, she, I'm asking, is it permitted that I represent her as well, or does she need to come up and give her?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Oh, all right. Well, we do not object per se to the rezoning from the GC to the CC because in looking over the uses and comparing the uses for these two districts, the CC district seems to have an advantage. There is less surface construction in the CC, which permits more space for landscaping. Therefore, that would be an improvement over the GC. Our objection is that the rezoning is attached to the, to the building of a 24-hour gas station and car wash convenience store, plus I believe there will be an outdoor food area where people can sit down and eat. Now, this operation, from what we understand, will be going on pretty much 24 hours a day, and we believe that it's going to have a negative environmental impact in terms of more traffic coming into the neighborhood because that's the purpose of a gas station car wash. You want as many cars and trucks as possible. Also, there's going to probably be increased nighttime crime. The lighting will be a problem, especially for people toward the southern part of the, of the structure. And there will be more auto emission because, you know, they're going to be lined up waiting for gas, waiting for the, for the car wash, and that's going to cause an increase in pollution. So because of the environmental effects, and there's going to be increased noise, of course, we do not favor the rezoning because of the purpose of the, you know, of the project. And I think unless Rachel wants to come up and add something, I think that's our position. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, I think I'll close public hearing, and Mr. Jobin, if you could come up. I'd like to have a dialogue with you about the project and a number of concerns the neighbors have had over really the last six months since we've been engaged on, on this proposition. And as you know, we've been working really hard on our redevelopment efforts in Benson, and they're going very well. And we started with a master plan to guide those efforts. And since then, the Louis' Market did close, and we've been working hard for about a year and a half to market that site and ideally for something like grocery or some other mixed use. So this is not the ideal use from our, from our perspective, as you know, but it's also true we haven't had any other takers in the meantime, and the site is currently vacant, and that's causing some problems, too. So Bucky says the option on the property contingent upon this rezoning and the overlay that are the propositions here today, and I agree with the testimony just now that the change in zoning actually further restricts what can go there than currently could happen now without city council approval. And the MCC overlay is a positive in that respect because it gets to the notion of the site, the site layout you described and landscaping and some of those things that I also want to talk about. And at this juncture, does come to us with a favorable planning department recommendation and planning board recommendation. So I think it's important for us to engage more on the site concerns and what those mean to neighbors and see what we can work out here. So I want to focus on those things at the indulgence of my colleagues here for a little bit, and then I know there might be some other questions here, too. So we talked about building appearance a little bit, and if you have that diagram with you, can you put that back up? It is not, it is not the traditional convenience store car wash we think of when we think of that. In fact, this is, I think, the only store, maybe the second store in this whole market where they're doing an enhanced building of this nature. Is that correct?
Yeah. Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of Bucks Inc. Yes, this is actually has a number of enhancements architecturally to the front facade as well as, again, it's a four-sided building, so all four sides will look very nice. This is probably one of the nicest bucks that I've seen or buckies that I've seen in the Omaha area. I think this is the first one that will be built that will look like this. It actually has a kitchen inside. One of the things that we'll talk about, I'm sure, is that, is this, Bucky's going to cater to the adjacent residential neighborhoods by having fresh food, and of course, we said yes, this one actually has a kitchen in it, so there'll be fresh fruit, there'll be sandwiches, fresh sandwiches, and the ability to do other things with respect to, to fresh-type food that can be either packaged or prepackaged for the adjacent neighborhood. So yeah, I think this is a substantial improvement over the look that they've had in the past, and I think even their other locations, meeting the urban design code and complying with the MCC guidelines have all been architecturally better than what you've seen with C stores in the past.
Okay. And I do want to get to the operations and offerings here in a minute, but as to the building itself, we described the ephesus and the brick and the stone and the multi-level depiction here. Can you commit today that what we're seeing here actually gets built? That's, I know that's not a, technically what we're approving here today, but when we see a picture and image like that, we want to make sure that's what actually happens should this be approved today. And I think that's contingent upon the building permit once you go to do that, and that's our, really our capability of making sure this happens, but I want to make sure that you're on board saying what, what gets built is what we're seeing here today.
Yeah. I mean, this isn't, doesn't rise to the level of a PUD, I don't believe, but I do believe that they intend to build this with these building materials, with these elevations and the articulation of the roof line and such. It will have to comply with the MCC and urban design code in any event, but yes, I think what you see here is what you're going to get.
Mr. Thiele, a question for you along those lines, too. So if approved today, the process would be before they construct to come back and get a building permit, and at that juncture, the planning department would ensure what's being proposed and being built looks like that?
James Thiele, Planning Director. The, but once the permit is given to the Permits and Inspection Division, then it's reviewed by our current planning staff to see it complies with the MCC overlay requirements.
And that includes building appearance as it's laid out here today?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. And then can you put the landscaping depiction to the aerial? That is a benefit, as I mentioned, of the MCC overlay that's happening here and adds, does add, in fact, exceeds code with its buffering, both in the back and on the sides. And I'm counting 26 trees there on the exterior and I think four on the interior, and the representation you're showing is what will happen there. I mean, that's required to do that many trees, right?
Well, the, the street trees are required certainly on, you know, 35-foot on center, so the street trees, street trees along northwest radial will definitely be there, but it's the intent to plant all of those trees, including the six-foot hedge along the retaining wall on the northeast corner as well. So yeah, again, my understanding is that what you see is what you're going to get.
Okay. And you'd agree as to more than intent, that's what's going to happen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And I do agree, I mean, there is bigger buffer in the back. It far exceeds what you're required to do, and we appreciate that also on, on the interior, too. There are mature trees to the north of that property line, too, that's of concern to the neighborhood. We want to make sure that doesn't impact, and you'd go on record saying that's, of course, not the intent, and that's not part of a project, nor will those be impacted, right?
My understanding is they're going to try to retain all of the trees on the north side, yes.
Okay. And let's talk about the car wash a little bit in the back there, too. And you talked about noise and what's required there, and there is a noise ordinance should that ever be a problem that the city can enforce, but my understanding of the operation is that you come in off northwest radial there and you, it is buffered by the trees and the shrubs you're showing there in terms of any stacking, and the car wash is actually inside the brick walls, right?
Yes, it's actually attached to the rear of the building. The early site plans called for the car wash to be out here all by itself, which I think it was decided that it would be a much better situation to have the car wash be attached to the back of the building. And you have plenty of space back here. Again, you have a 30-foot buffer, but we actually exceed that. It's 43 feet in most places, and then, of course, with the landscaping as well, I don't think you're going to have too much of a noise issue.
And if we did, that's the noise ordinance we're going to enforce?
Yeah. The other thing I would point out, actually, with respect to the site plan, is it's actually much less intense than what was currently there when it was operated as a Louis' Market because the delivery trucks were all in the back of the building, and they would receive four to five 18-wheeler delivery trucks every single day on the backside of the building, which was closest to the residential neighborhood to the north. With, with this particular site plan, you've got the 30-foot buffering, the landscaping, and the only 18-wheelers that will be showing up at this site will be, will pull in off northwest radial, will unload in the front because that's where they'll dump the gas, and then they'll exit, of course. The only other trucks that you'll see here are the smaller delivery trucks that are actually delivering goods into the store itself. So there won't be the heavy intense use of all the 18-wheelers coming in and loading in the back, so I think actually from a noise perspective, you see a much better situation.
And to the pumps in front, we've committed, you've committed that those won't have the music that comes out like some do. That won't be a noise problem either?
Right. All they will have is just the help speaker and microphone, if you will, so they can, they can correspond with the cashier inside, but there won't be any music or anything like that.
Or TVs or something like that?
Or any TVs, no.
Yeah. Okay. And let's talk about the other operations a little bit. So you started to mention this. Certainly, an interest of the community is grocery and food offerings to the greatest extent possible. If there's possibilities for fresh fruit, vegetables, I know they thought it's expanded convenience here, and there is a kitchen, and there would be more food than you, than they probably offer in most any other store they have here, but it's still not grocery. I know ultimately you respond to demand and to what the neighborhood wants because you're a business, but can you describe a little bit what you're willing to do in terms of initial expansion of products and meeting that interest?
Well, I think the idea was, and we talked about this the other day, is to offer as much fresh food as the store will, I guess that there's demand for. Then you have the kitchen inside as well, so of course you have the ability to make sandwiches and other types of food products that you can actually sell on-site. So the idea is to cater to the adjoining neighborhood. I guess the example that we thought of is in the South Omaha Bucks Inc. Of course, they have a different line, more of, carry more Hispanic-type foods in South Omaha as they do in their other locations within Omaha, so they do cater to their environment and the surrounding neighborhoods. Obviously, that's, that's, that's what any good business would do, so.
And I believe I mentioned, you know, milk, bread, eggs, cheese.
Right.
Lunch meat.
The typical convenience store-type stuff. That's right.
Well, in fact, more than the typical.
Well, more than the, yes, more than, when you talk about those types of prepackaged goods, yes, the typical, but otherwise, it's expanded by the kitchen and the ability to make fresh food and fresh fruit and those kinds of things.
Okay. And there's, I know there's the concern of a 24/7 operation. I know we can't, that's not something we can regulate through, through the zoning perspective. I know that is the business model, but can you speak to that a little bit, too?
Yeah. I mean, all their stores in the Omaha metropolitan area operate on a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week basis, so obviously they would want and desire to operate this store at this location in the same fashion.
And I agree with you. You mentioned lighting. That is shielded per code. I, I do agree, from what I've seen, that given the new design guidelines it has to abide by, that lighting shouldn't be a problem as it's proposed in terms of additional impact to the community. Let's talk about two other things, though, maybe three other things, and I'll relinquish the floor here. Traffic, I know that's a big concern, both in terms of the access and primarily the access to the north there on 58th Street and what that might mean, either, either for stacking or, or to the neighborhood to the north. Can you describe that situation? And I know we've talked about a willingness, is there a willingness not to have that access? But I know there's an opinion about that by you, and I think from Public Works, too.
Well, when we looked at this, this, by shifting the driveway 60 feet to the north, we were able to meet all the stacking requirements on the 58th Street. Obviously, with any business location, especially a C store, you really need two means of ingress and egress. In this particular case, you have the right-in, right-out at, on Northwest Radial Highway, and then, of course, you have the right-in, the full movement here at 58th Street with the signalized intersection here at 58th Street. But the fact that it meets the stacking requirements is a good thing, plus you have a signalized, much more safe turning movement here at the signal at 58th Street and Northwest Radial Highway. The likelihood of traffic moving into the neighborhood, I think, is slim to none unless someone lives in the neighborhood that is going to be coming to the box. I just don't see people going that direction to, to ingress and egress the particular store. So with that, I mean, it meets all the requirements of Public Works. It was, like I said, it was pushed back as far as it could to the north, and it's a safe intersection.
Yeah, and I believe the neighborhood see, if there has to be an access there, I believe they think, they would agree that moving what's currently there further to the north helps, but they'd probably be interested in moving it even farther north than it is. But as I understand it, that's an elevation concern, or can you talk about that?
Yes, there's a grade change that doesn't allow it to be moved any further north than it is. And of course, it meets the distance requirements from the driveway to Northwest Radial Highway, so it meets all the safety guidelines and design guidelines of Public Works.
And the elevation concern is your concern, or is that's a concern by Public Works or both?
Well, you can't physically make it work. I mean.
An engineering concern.
Engineering concern.
Okay. But we did talk about how can you help discourage any traffic heading through the neighborhood, and I can help do that, too, and we have been, by having some speed enforcement there recently, and we can continue to do that. I know the neighborhood's also interested in the potential for traffic calming, should that be necessary, and I think they feel it is necessary. So Public Works, a couple of comments on that from Mr. Stube. The process for seeking speed bumps or traffic calming can be pursued through your office.
Public Works, we do have a traffic calming program, and it's available to citizens. They can request a packet, and there's a process that they go through, and if it warrants the criteria that's listed within the traffic calming program, that the potential is that traffic calming measures would be installed.
And we even talked about some signage, possibly, if that's something the applicant's willing to do. I think the terms were, you know, local traffic only or something like that to the right. I think you're willing to do that. If Public Works might be, too?
That's something that we can take a look at. That's not necessarily something that we like to, I guess, promote as far as local traffic only because it's like any other type of sign, the potential is, unless there's enforcement there, there's not necessarily compliance.
Okay. And I know the police department's willing to help us, too, by being out there and doing some enforcement if we need to keep doing that. Two more things, and then I think Mr. Pauls has a question, and maybe Mr. Jerem. I know you're willing to participate in the neighborhood should this be approved today. In fact, you're, you would be already included in the Business Improvement District boundaries, which means you have to participate in what, what they're doing, but obviously, that's something you're willing to do, and you have some products you're working on that I think you're interested in. You could participate in the Neighborhood Association and the Business, the Merchants Association as well.
That's correct.
And then lastly, I know there's a concern about, of course, security and the liquor license that eventually accompanies this. That's the business model, I know citywide. That's not what we're considering here today, but that would come back at a later time. So I wanted to have a dialogue with you about that. When we were talking about security and if there's people loitering or there becomes a security issue outside the building, I know it's in your interest not to have that as well, but I, something I learned that I didn't know is you do monitor these things from a central standpoint at all your stores by video. Is that true?
That's right. They, all the Bucks Inc.'s have cameras inside and outside, and they're, all the stores are monitored, monitored from a central viewing location.
24/7?
24/7.
And should there be a problem? You committed to provide extra security, and you have done that in other places before, right?
Right. You, they would hire a security company that would have, be on-site personnel if necessary, yes?
Private company?
Yes.
And then there is interest to, interest, too, in making sure we aren't having issues of people loitering outside. It is a nice area outside that encourages people to, to be there, which is good, but we also don't want to have the problem of somebody buying a single sales, walking out there and loitering, or, you know, taking a single bottle and littering the neighborhood. Willing to consider such restrictions when the liquor license comes back around?
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Buchanan, the owner of Bucks Inc., and he said he's willing to consider that, although the only concern is, is that they have 60 different liquor licenses across the Omaha metropolitan area, all of which call for the single sales, but we're willing to at least consider it and look at it. But obviously, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for them to want people to loiter in the parking lot either because that will discourage people from coming into the store and shopping and doing legitimate-type business there, so. And again, security is always, you know, first and foremost for their patrons, so I, again, it's not in their best interest to allow that to occur either, and they won't.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the dialogue here and the meetings we've had, and I know this was laid at Planning Board several times at our request so that you could engage the neighbors, and you did do a good job of meeting with everyone involved here over the last six months to try and address the concerns you could address, and I, and I'm glad that you are addressing many of the ones we, we've talked about so far. I agree, this isn't the ideal use, but it's also true there's not a master plan issue that says this can't go here, and in fact, the two items we're addressing today tighten the restriction on the property and do have the overlay requirements of doing a much improved landscape and a much improved site than, than what's currently there, which is vacant, so. I know we have a couple more questions. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions. I didn't realize you were as involved in buckies as you are. On 132nd and Q, there's a buckies there?
Mm-hmm.
Now, to be honest with you, that design is even better than what the design you're promoting here, and that was built 20-some years ago. It was sort of a unique design, if I had the right plays.
Well, the 138th Street.
No, I'm talking about 132nd.
132nd.
And Q. I could be wrong there. But it's, but it, I mean, it was actually very, very attractive. I'm even saying better than some of the ones they have put up since then. But I do have a question other than that because that just brought back some memories because I used to drive back by that all the time. The one on 138th and Q, I know we're diverting a little bit from this, but that's going to have a similar design, this, or is it going to be the old school?
It meets the. It meets the MCC overlay requirements, which is the Urban Design Code with respect to building materials and such, but I don't believe it has the same front elevation as this particular store. But it is, it is a very nice store, and we, on all the stores in the last six months, we've met with the Planning Department on numerous occasions to try to get a store that, a prototypical store that would meet the Urban Design Code wherever they really go, and so that's the idea here. This one, I think, has actually stepped up or enhanced from an architectural standpoint over what their other buildings are that also comply with the Urban Design Code.
I'm just, just seeing if I can get a little bit more attractive story there, 138th and Q. But I do have another story that I think the people in Benson ought to be very aware of, because I'm going to tell you a little bit of a story. About 160th and Center, there's a gas station right now. Before Buc-Ee's came in, it was a simple, small gas station, everything sloped, beautiful trees, mature trees, beautiful. Went right into a neighborhood, into the Woodhaven neighborhood, I happen to live in Western Trails, which is above, but as you go into the neighborhood, it was a nice, because you see all this green grass. Now, no mature trees, relatively small ones, have been planted, and there's a big wall, where that beautiful sloping hill, now there's a wall like this. I think they literally took away going into a neighborhood, they lost it. Before that, it was a gentle, sort of a neat area, and it is busy, I go by that store all the time, it is busy, they're doing well, and I realize it's their property, but they took away a very scenic view into a neighborhood, gave them walls, cut down the big trees, planted some small ones, so beware. I'm serious on this, because it irritated me, because that was a neighborhood, that was what I call a middle-class type of neighborhood, driving into it, total distortion.
That was probably pre-Urban Design Code, I would imagine.
I'm sure it was, but I'm just saying, I'm just.
And so, one of the things that you have now are the restrictions on the retaining wall heights, which that's what they've complied with, so then, you, instead of having that big wall, you have the step up and the green space, the step up and the green space, so it's actually a much softer look, I think that was one of the ideas of the whole Omaha by design.
And, yes, and I appreciate that, I'm just saying beware, because they're in the business, and they want to be good neighbors, I'm sure, but be cautious, I mean, because I tell you, when I drive by there, all I see is a wall.
You won't see that here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem.
I've lost count, but I think we have three Bucs, or Buc-Ee's, in District Three. There's a couple of the really old ones, 50th and Dodge and 30th and Dodge, or 29th and Dodge, but we have a newer one over on 60th and Center, and I think, in terms of their recent development, they've done a nice job there, they're, I never get complaints from the neighbors about the store, and its cleanliness and upkeep is very good, so I don't have those fears because of my experience with them. I do think they listen to their neighbors, I think they had plans on redoing, or hoping to redo a car wash behind the 50th and Dodge location, but listen to the neighbors in terms of backing off of the concerns of creep into the, to the neighbors of the south, so they do listen, and that's now a very well-kept lawn that they mow, and I think even irrigate. Other things that the neighbors are getting, though, that I think promote reinvestment is probably a substantial dollar investment and jobs that Buc-Ee's will be making, so just wondering what the dollar investment is roughly for this location, on the redevelopment.
It's approximately $5 million.
And in terms of neighborhood access, are they also going to have new sidewalks on the east and west and south sides?
Yes, they'll be required to have sidewalks on all sides.
So, as terms of walkability or bikeability for the neighbors and their children, it'll be very accessible.
That's correct.
As well as the questions that Mr. Festerson raised, one thing perhaps the neighbors don't know is for how many years he had been meeting with other potential developers to try to get reinvestment at that location, so, I know you wouldn't toot your own horn here, but many different prospective types of developers that you met with, different types of uses, both in grocery stores and other things, it's just the lot size, I think you said the parameters of it were too small for, in terms of today's dollar investments, what they're looking for, so. I think, I bring that up because it's important to have people keep in focus what the alternatives are and are not in all due reality, as to what can go there in terms of the investment dollars that are oftentimes, as we just heard here, at least $5 million, what their return on investment has to be and the time for recapturing that, it just wasn't going to work on these other uses, and it wasn't for lack of trying, I know, it's, we've gone up there several times, and I've had regular updates from you, and you certainly gave it a yeoman's effort to get, you know, a different kind of use, but I think in terms of the accommodations I hear, and the store with the eating area and the kitchen, and the offerings that'll be made, I think it's probably, while not number one on the desirable list that you pursued, I think it's something worthy of support, and I think, from my experience over at 60th and Center, you'll see a good neighbor and a nice property development.
Thank you. And we, I agree with those comments in terms of the applicant working with the neighborhood on this proposition, and similar to the example Councilman Jerem just described, there was a residential lot that was of concern during this process, that has essentially been taken off the table, it's only being landscaped, it's not protruding into the neighborhood as it might have otherwise, or was originally going to do, and I believe that's even, there's even an option of selling that to an adjoining neighbor to keep it residential in the long term, so I appreciate that part, too.
Right, that's that lot right here.
And I do believe, I mean, the current owner of this is a Benson person at heart, and wants to see the right thing for Benson, and I know he feels that strongly, and the Louis Market family, you know, is a stalwart of the Benson business district for years and years, and I believe them when they also say they worked hard to find a grocery replacement here, too, because we all did, and nobody knows the grocery market better than they do, and I think it is true, it's a consolidating market in Omaha right now, that is not consistent with a site of this nature. That's not the only thing we tried to incent, and we did make incentives available, this product, however, is not using incentives, but it's also true that the market wasn't going to sustain that, at least not over the last year and a half, and we do have a vacant site that's causing us some problems. So with that, I think we have one more light, I do want to say, before we do that, that we will be watching the process of the building permit closely, and given our conversation we just had today, and the liquor license closely when that comes back around, and certainly, I'm willing to continue working with the Benson Neighborhood and Business Association, as we have been over the last few years, on the notion of what's called Neighborhood Conservation Enhancement District and Overlay, that does regulate these things, and makes the character of a business district consistent over time, like we've done in Dundee, and we can certainly do that here in Benson, too.
Will be approval, second.
Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do buy gas at Buc-Ee's, and I appreciate that, and the reason why I came down pretty hard earlier is because I want to make sure that we all see, you know, what the world is about, and I, I think with the President being in charge of what's going on up in Benson area, that follow-up will happen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second, roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're both passed 7 to 0. Item number eight, ordinance to rezone property located at 5718 Sewer Street from R435, Single Family Residential District, High Density, to R5 Urban Family Residential District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number eight is today, are there any proponents?
Michael Leon, 7132 Pacific, I'm here representing Mr. Pogan Pole, who is the applicant, and I could answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Will be approved.
Roll call.
Gernat? Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem, did you say pass? You passed second time for potential conflict?
No, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't say pass?
I said yes.
Okay. It's passed 7 to 0. Items nine through 13 is one case, nine is ordinance to rezone property located southwest of 64th Avenue and West Center Road from DR, R3, MHCC, and GI to MU Mixed Use District, portions of which property lie within the flood fringe and floodway. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 10 is ordinance to prove a mixed-use development agreement. 11 is resolution that the revised preliminary plat entitled UNO Nebraska Village is hereby accepted, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 12 is resolution that the replat transmitted here with entitled UNO Nebraska Village is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval, and 13 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on items number nine through 13 are today, proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the project, I guess there's a lot of people and parties involved in this particular project. With me today is Chancellor John Christensen of the university, I also have Mr. Howard Hawks, who's a, on the Board of Regents of the university in Lincoln, as well as Trev Alberts, the athletic director. I also have a number of representatives from HTR, who are the consulting architects and engineers on this particular project, we have Bruce Carpenter and Matt Tondle, who's the traffic engineer, and then we also have Zach Uigert and Lance Vertruba of S2W, which are the owners consultant for this, the entity that was formed by the university, to actually assist in developing this particular project. The approvals, we've all dealt with this project for quite some time now, and I appreciate all of your involvement in it, from the staff, to the various directors, to the mayor's office, to the city council, I think everyone put in a lot of effort into this particular project to see it through to where it is today, and the approvals here today, of course, are the zoning and the subdivision of the property, that sets forth the specific infrastructure that is required for this particular project, the items that are yet to be before this council, that will come up probably in the next couple of weeks, all of the right-of-way dedications might be a little bit longer than that, depending on when we get those signed off on by the owners of the property. But the next two things that you'll see, or documents that you'll see, that'll come before the councils, number one, the interlocal cooperation agreement with respect to what I call the funding, or the reimbursement of, from the city to the university, and this is what we did when we amended the budget on September 2nd to allocate a certain portion of CIP, the 2.2 million to be payable January 1st, 2015, that's what's called for in the interlocal agreement, and then how that whole thing's going to work, and what we've done is we've structured it, so you've got 2.2 million being funded in 2015, and 4.1 million being funded at some point in the future, hopefully, it's at least the expectation of the university and the desire of the city to come up with that money, but we'll deal with that when we, when we have the interlocal cooperation agreement, but I've worked with the law department, Public Works, and the mayor's office, and some of the city council members on this particular matter, and I think it's in final form, and will be before you in the next couple of weeks. The other interlocal cooperation agreement is for a license and an option to purchase part of the city's property, this is all part of the city's CSO property, to the south of the university hockey arena, which, there's a triangular portion will be used for additional parking, and then there's another kind of irregular-shaped piece that is off 64th Avenue that calls for the direct alignment to Arbor Street, or the extension of Arbor Street when it happens in the future. Then the other two items that will be before you down the road is, the first one being the dedication of the right-of-way of that portion of Arbor Street that's situated on the MED property. MED's board met, and they've agreed to dedicate that property, and that was one of the requirements of Public Works, so we've got that done, we just don't have the formal document to actually dedicate it, but that formal dedication will come to the Planning Board and the council down the road. The other dedication right-of-way is 68th Street from 67th to Mercy Road, but that dedication shouldn't be too much of a problem, because it's owned by 6801 Mercy Road LLC, which is comprised of 60% the university foundation and 40% Exorvum Future Trust, so I think we'll get that together, and we'll dedicate that portion of it, the remainder of 68th Street that makes that connection is actually owned by the city, and so there'll be a dedication of use of the city's property for public street purposes. So those are the things that still are yet to come, but this is a big step today, because it's the zoning, and it's the plating, and it's really kind of the skeletal structure to move forward with this great project. I did want to point out, there's one item in the mixed-use development agreement with respect to parking, I think what we did in that mixed-use development agreement, it just kind of carried forward, is we had, showed 1,875 stalls being constructed south of Center. We are actually going to construct at least 2,000 stalls south of Center, mostly of which we're going to try to have on the east side of the creek, we've been working with Exorvum Future Trust regarding that particular issue, so the parking will be dealt with as well, but I just wanted to call that to your attention, the reason why there's 1,875 stalls set forth in the mixed-use development agreement is primarily because that's the code, it's one stall per four seats, but we're actually going to be more than that, there's also some agreements being worked out for maybe some additional stalls within the village itself, up to 400 stalls in the parking garage, so we're continuing to work on that, and again, I just want to let the council know, we appreciate, and the city staff, and the directors, and everyone else, the, we appreciate the collaboration and the cooperation on this particular project, it's been a good one. I think we're going to have a tremendous asset to the university, to this surrounding area, and to the city at large with this particular project, and with that, I want to turn it over to the chancellor to say a few words, and then, obviously, answer any questions that you might have regarding this project. Thank you.
John Christensen, Chancellor of University of Nebraska at Omaha, 60th and Dodge Street. I want to thank you for hearing us today, and on behalf of the University of Nebraska System and the UNO campus, I would like to thank all of you for your consideration, work, and support that has occurred to this point in the project consideration. I'd also like to thank the mayor, the mayor's staff, and all of the department heads that have worked with us through the duration of putting this project together. This is an incredibly important project for our campus, and I think will be a valuable asset to the community going forward. So, once again, on behalf of all of us in the university, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other proponents, anyone else in favor today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, I'm proud to be associated with this project, both from this hat that I wear at the council, and also being an employee of UNO, and once upon a time, UNO was, was the place that you went to when you couldn't go anywhere else, if you were too poor, or if you didn't make it at Lincoln, or Creighton, or Iowa State, but that's no longer true, UNO is now a destination school of first choice, students are now making the choice based on the academic offerings that we have, and other services that we provide. Examples of some of the leadership that's gone on over the last few years, the chancellor's has, they have brought in dorms, a first-rate ISNT college, a revamped academic business program, we are in the process now of having a new community collaborating center, and that'll be coming soon. We're doing Division One sports, and the arena of which we're now dealing with, this further improves our student life, and it helps the community in its buy-in for making UNO Omaha's university. The thing that I am really impressed with is that the Board of Regents, Chancellor Christensen, and Trev Alberts, the athletic director, when they say student athlete, the emphasis is on athletics first, and a lot of times, athletics drives the ship, and it's all about the sports, but at UNO, I'm so proud that it's the athletics first, and when our students graduate, they graduate not only with statistics and records that they've, you know, compiled, but also a good education to go out and make a difference in the world. So in summary, this endeavor will have a positive ripple effect, as the chancellor says, it's more than just, I'm putting words in his mouth, but it's more than just something you do for the school, this is, this is a city project, it has a ripple effect, it's not just improving UNO, but rather improving, or providing an important stimulus that helps the larger city at large, city at large, being taken to another level. So I wholeheartedly support this, I see it as a partnership. I see it as a partnership and a partnership in which we all win, not just the university, but the city wins also and thereby its citizens. Thank you very much, and I move the approval.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chancellor and all of you, this was a really, I think this is a really great project. It's, I'm glad, like, like Dr. Thompson is, to be a part of it. I got a couple of questions, though. One in, one has to do with, haven't heard much from the business community. Jay Noddo, if you wanted to come up, if you would, please. I guess I didn't, I guess I didn't hear much about, you know, what the business community feels about this, or if there are any issues that need to be addressed or whatever. I guess I'm just, you know, trying to make sure that everything is the way it needs to be as we move forward.
Jay Noddo, 2285 South 67th Street, Exarban Village. I guess I can speak a little bit on behalf of the property owners association in the village, maybe as an advisor to Exarban Future Trust and an investor, significant investor, risk-taker in the neighborhood. First, let me say we're all proponents of the growth of the university and this venue. It's very exciting. I think it's going to be wonderful. Can't wait to drop a hockey puck there. We have spent the better part of two years working with the university, the more recently-formed Facilities Development Corp., Regent Hawks, H D R, and others, thinking about the greater good of the neighborhood. You know, Exarban's been here for 100 years. The planning for Exarban Village started about 10 or 11 years ago. And we all have a lot to be proud of and we have a lot to be thinking about in the future. There are a number of agreements that are between Facilities Development Corp. and the university and Exarban Future Trust and the property owners association that are in process. They deal with parking quantity and placement and free parking on event day for the public and the patrons of events in the arena, how traffic moves, and how the area will continue to develop in the future. There's also an architectural control committee approval coming for the arena, which is necessary, I believe, for an above-grade building permit. Lot of work's going on. You all have spent an awful lot of time on this, senior staff has. Councilman Thompson was kind enough and courageous enough to agree to shift some things in the C I P within your district. Councilman Jerem has been very involved in a lot of our meetings, Councilman Festerson as well. So we're really pleased. We have a little work to do in the days ahead, but there's nothing that we can see that should hold up the schedule for the arena. We're looking forward to finalizing agreements in the private side, I guess you will, you would say, over the next several weeks, and can't wait for ribbon cutting.
Thank you. Mr. President, again, I think this is, oh, I'm sorry. Did, were there some comments that you wanted to make?
Mr. Hawks.
Ms. Hawks, if you want to make some comments.
Yes, I'm Howard Hawks, 1446 North 142nd Circle. In light of your question, Councilman Gray, I thought I would add a different dimension than the village area and that area of Chris Jerem's district. Heritage Services, of which I'm a board member, has undertaken a drive from the larger foundations and the broader community to raise $35 million to contribute to this project. And the number we're working with now is 39 million in total, counting the University of Nebraska Foundation. So these are the major foundations and businesses represented in this amount of money that we're trying to raise that are throughout the community. So you can visualize the foundations that you've all heard about and you can visualize the major employers and businesses. And the reason is, not only is this critical to U N O, but it's critical to the community because we're building community eyes. I think in the first two weeks, Chancellor Christensen was approached by 19 different organizations to hold graduation services there. So we intend for this to be a community facility as well as a U N O facility. Thank you.
Thank you for that perspective. Thank you, Mr. President. It's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, and I'd like to commend the group, and I know the group, when I say that collectively, is large, and there's a lot of different stakeholders from the university and its development partners, to the Exarban Village merchants, property owners in Exarban Village and around it, to Exarban Future Trust and the Neighborhood Association that's right there. And if you think about all those dynamic interplay between them, I'm delighted that every step along the way, that there's been a willingness on part of the university and the developers to reach out to and to accommodate and work with the various other stakeholders. And I'm sure, as we've heard here today, the work isn't done, that this doesn't stop today. Like all good ongoing relationships, that'll continue in the future. And the Neighborhood, Exarban Elmwood Park's just delighted at the university and what you're doing to increase the ability of your neighbors to both walk and bike to the new arena, to Exarban Village. The Exarban Village merchants and property owners have unique issues attributable to the, I think, greater success than they probably anticipated. And we've learned along the way, the things that they're doing to accommodate the already burgeoning traffic they're seeing, the increased events that they've held there, which is, I'm really bittersweet about, there are really neat events there, but the downtown part of my district is not so happy lately. So we gotta watch the poaching there, Jay. In terms of the traffic, I think one of the most respected traffic consultants and engineers in the region, if not in the country, I've met with him and he unequivocally signs off on, on this project in terms of its impacts and the recommendations, in terms of wayfinding that can be done and parking access in the, in the village that'll improve this. So I'm very, very pleased and delighted that, that we are where we are. It takes time. I think Larry Jobin, when he, when you first came onboard in this project, we shared with each other frank discussion with regard to the hopes of the development team on your timeline. And I didn't think we could get it done as quickly as, as it has. And that's a testament to the above and beyond efforts, including from Regent Hawks, who, and when he was laid up and on two wheels, was participating in meetings. So good work, job well done, and let's get this thing across the finish line.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. For the lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed and adopted seven to zero. Item number 14, ordinance to rezone property located at 13624 Miami Street from R three to R four, single-family residential district, high-density, A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 14 is today. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Most approve.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven, or passed seven to zero. Item 15, ordinance to rezone property located at 4200 North 204th Street from A G and R five to R five, urban family residential district. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 15 is today. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Most approve.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero.
I think he's, like a bad light.
Resolutions for preliminary plat and variances. Sixteen is resolution, the preliminary plat attached to Capitol District, located northwest of 10th Street and Capitol Avenue along attached conditions are accepted. Preparation final plot is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
And we hereby declare it in the city of Omaha, Larry Jobin did.
Yeah.
Item number 16 is. Public hearing on item number 16 is today. Are there any proponents, Mr. Jobin?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, simply here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this. But this is the plat for the Capitol District moving forward. So there'll be additional documents and redevelopment and such coming forward. But I think you had a overview of what Mr. Moylan's trying to do at that particular location. So this is the plat that would allow it to be subdivided and closed and developed.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Most approve.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 17, resolution at the preliminary plat entitled cottages of Oakdale, a cluster subdivision inside the city limits located at 9515 West Center Road along attached conditions are accepted. Preparation final plot is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 17 is today. Proponents? Mr. Slusky.
Good afternoon, Jerry Slusky, 8712 West Dodge for the applicant. As we discussed this morning, these are the proposed cottages at Oakdale, 96th Center and Center Southeast Corner. The only open issue on this particular application are the ends of these two drives. And apparently, we've not been able to resolve it, even though the planning board asked us to with Public Works. We have, since the planning board meeting, extended each of the ends of those drives here and here through the property line, and we don't think there's any more room to go. And one of the reasons that we can't go any further is because the same department that's requiring these hammerhead full turnarounds is the same department that requested that we give 17 feet of right-of-way along 96th Street to ultimately, whenever it's available, to widen that. But for that dedication, we would not have run into this problem and would have been able to satisfy Public Works' issues. We were concerned from a public safety standpoint that this could cause a concern for fire and safety, and so we reached out last summer to the fire department. Again, as I shared with you this morning, Assistant Fire Marshal Darrell Giles wrote that the fire apparatus access road shall extend so many feet and have access to the entire property. The exception is, the fire code official is authorized to increase the dimension of 150 feet where the building is equipped throughout with an approved automatic sprinkler system installed with the appropriate sprinkler standard. If these buildings are considered single-family dwellings, which they are, then it gives us the standard. And the developer, Essex Communities, who've done 30 or 40 beautiful properties around the Midwest, have agreed to include fire sprinklers in these cottage homes. And anyway, I don't know what else we can do to comply. We certainly would appreciate your support so we can move on and see if we can get grading done this year and start out a, what could be a development that will enhance the beauty and the homes at Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Most approve.
We.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, my.
Yeah, I think we, so I think we should have a conversation about the request, and there is a floor amendment, Mr. Pauls may want to discuss and maybe get some info from Public Works on the item that's been brought up before us. Mr. Pauls?
Right. The amendment would remove condition one, and I want to see if there's any reaction to that by Public Works.
Bob Stube, Public Works. This is a preliminary plat, and we are requesting that item one remain as part of the preliminary plat as a, again, a stipulation with even Mr. Slusky admitted to us that the planning board recommended that they work with us. We've not had any contact by the developer's engineer that would indicate what they're proposing to do. What Mr. Slusky showed you today was the first time that we've seen anything, and all we're asking is for their engineer to provide us information relative to how that turnaround will work. What we try to do is have minimum standards that essentially establish some level of protection to the private property owners once the developer leaves. And I would venture to guess that if anybody buys that property that's on the end of that private drive, it's not going to be very receptive to garbage trucks or UPS trucks or anybody else that's going to come down there and want to turn around. If there's not enough room within that private street to maneuver, the potential is they're going to go on driveway. So we're just asking for their engineer to come to us and show us what they're proposing.
Could we have Ms. Slusky come to the.
With due respect, Mr. Stube, we have had.
Name and address, please, again.
Four conversations.
Mr. Slusky, is your name and address again?
Sorry, Jerry Slusky, 8712 West Dodge. Thank you.
Thanks.
With Brian Haas in the department and showed him that the four or five feet, the ultimate max up to the property line could be given, but we're happy to provide that drawing to you today by electronic means. We'll have Brad Wecker, the engineer, get it down for your review. Look, we'd like to go on and continue to plan. If it continues to be a requirement that we have to extend that hammerhead somehow, frankly, we don't know how to do that. How can we go beyond the property line to do that and the setbacks?
Mr. Stube, do you want to respond to that, please?
Well, I'll state again is that what we would like is for their engineer to essentially show us what they propose. There's, there are engineering design standards available that demonstrate turning movements for particular types of vehicles. And again, you know, the first ones that are going to get a call, if, if garbage trucks or whatever start turning around in somebody's driveway is going to be the city. It's not necessarily going to be the developer anymore. So we're just trying to make sure that before we move forward with the final plat, that we've had an opportunity to evaluate what they're proposing and that there is enough room available to make those turning movements.
And, and we're happy to do so. If we could have one state that, once the developer has achieved the maximum amount of land available, that that would be adequate showing to the Public Works Department, we'd be happy to do that, or something like that in your, in the condition of, of item number one. To, to let it linger is going to cause a concern for the lender and it, to keep the property development going. So something like that would be appreciated. We would like to, to move on.
Mr. Slusky, I have a question. What is to linger? What, I mean, what timeframe are we talking about? Just.
Well, we're, we've applied and are back on the planning board agenda next week with the final plat. And again, we're going to be sending down the final plat and show the difference between the preliminary and the final and how we try to maximize those hammerhead turns. Those will be down here today, and we'll send you all copies too, if you like. And once that's approved, presumably by the planning board, because they've already approved it unanimously once, we would hope to be back here within two or three weeks thereafter for final plat approval and the rezoning. And that would give us an opportunity, Mr. Pauls, to get started with the grading and started with the infrastructure so they can get these things underway before winter.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. President, do I need a second, or can we move? Okay.
Yep, you can, you can move wherever you'd like to move.
Yeah, let's, let's move to remove condition one. An amendment. Be my.
Yeah. There's a motion. Got a motion and a second?
Do we have a second to the, we're moving? Okay.
Mr. Jerem did. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I guess I'm, I'm seeing the hesitancy and concern in your face. I wasn't here this morning at the pre-council meeting, but I guess I'm wondering, first of all, if we, if we remove that condition, maybe I ought to ask, Mr. Stube wants that, that to stay. Mr. Stube, if we move that, if we remove that condition, what does that do? What does that do specifically, or how? What does that do specifically, or how does that hamper the Public Works Department?
Well, again, all we're asking for is for their engineer to essentially demonstrate to us that they meet the requirements of the code. Now typically, the requirements of the code is that there's some type of a bubble, a cul-de-sac. What we've already said is that we would consider some type of a hammerhead, some method to be able to, once those vehicles go down that particular private drive, they're going to have to get back out onto the, the main streets. And so how do they do that? Do they back up that stretch, which is not necessarily very safe? Or do we provide them some type of a turnaround mechanism to allow them to be able to go out headfirst? And again, if there's not enough room within that private drive, the potential is, is that those vehicles, whatever they might be, have the ability to pull into somebody's driveway and then back up and then go out. Or if there's a conflict, such as vehicles may be parked in those driveways, then their only option is to back up. And, you know, that's, that's the concern that we have. And so all we're asking, and this has gone on since August 13th, was that, when it was presented to the planning board, is that for their engineer to essentially demonstrate to us that they've considered the requirements of the code and provided enough room for those vehicles to be able to get out of there safely.
And Mr. Gray?
And so, well, let me, let me finish though, Mr. Slusky. So does, all you're asking for, does that, does that mean that, I mean, do we have to lay... Much as I hate to say lay it over, but I mean...
No, this, this does not require a layover.
And all it needs, all you need to do is get some confirmation from the engineer?
Yes.
And you said you'd do that. Is that right?
Yes, and Jerry Slusky, again, we absolutely confirm that we will have those engineers' drawings down here today to the planning, to the Public Works planning and the council for further review, showing that we've maximized the turnaround, the hammerhead portion of the drives since the planning board meeting, as we agreed to do and as we agreed to do today.
I guess, Mr. Pauls, Councilmember Pauls, I guess I'm a little unwilling to do that at this point. I mean, I think we need, this is the preliminary plat. And I think if we, I mean, I think you still have the option. I mean, we still have the final plat that still has to come before us. So I guess I'm just, I guess I'm wondering...
You're asking me to withdraw?
Yeah, sure. I'm not, maybe not withdraw, but I don't, I don't know that we need to hamstring the, the Public Works Department on it, on it, on this specific issue. If we can, if we can get past it by the time we get to the final plat, they're talking about being before the, the planning, planning board again in about a week or so. So that should come before us in about two, about three or four weeks for the final plat. And I'm thinking then, if we're not, if Public Works is still not satisfied and we're not satisfied, then, 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 you know, then we can vote differently at that point in time. But I mean, with this being a preliminary plat, I don't, I don't see the necessity for that removal nor at least giving them the opportunity to move ahead to the final plat right now.
At least it's given us the opportunity to discuss this. I think we need to remove the, the second then?
I mean, I would, I don't necessarily need to, I don't want you to necessarily withdraw it, but you know, I think, you know, I guess, I don't know that, I don't know that we need to, to go that far at this point with a final plat.
May I ask?
With a preliminary plat.
Couldn't you do that anyway with the final plat, Jerry Slusky?
Yes.
So you could turn it down. I guess my point is...
That's the point I'm making. Yeah.
If, if you approve it without one, you can always turn it down anyway if the Public Works Department says, hey, we still don't like this thing. I think you still have that option. I'm just simply suggesting it would be, help us so that to beat winter, if we could get an approval here today and take our chances with you when we come back for final approval, with the representation, we're going to show you how we've maximized the turnarounds in the next 24 hours. And we'd appreciate a vote on that without Number 1.
Okay, that, that ends the questioning I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, it seems to me there's two ways to handle it. Like Mr. Slusky just said, I think what Mr. Gray was describing, which is you could, we could approve the floor amendment, which changes preliminary plat. And they have a commitment to get the documents down to Public Works to make them comfortable or not. Final plat comes back, and we could change it back if we wanted to. Or we could not approve the floor amendment today and wait for that to happen until final plat comes back and handle it then if we think it merits that, that action. But clearly, the applicant's requesting we do something today to get that moving and has made the commitment today to get it moving. And if it doesn't move, we can certainly address it on final plat. So whatever the will of the body is.
Yeah, there's a motion in a second on the amendment.
Motion in a second. No further lights? Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The amendment passed, or is adopted, six to one, as amended?
Second. As amended?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, as amended, seven to zero. Items 18 and 19 go together. Eighteen is resolution, the request from Charlton Homes LLC for a variance from the future development zone specifications of the urban development element of the master plan for property located northwest of 204th Street and Ames Avenue is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval. And nineteen is resolution, the preliminary plat entitled "R Review", along with attached conditions are accepted. Preparation final plat is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearings on items number 18 and 19 are today. Proponents, Mr. Hogan?
Dennis Hogan, Regency Senator, here on behalf of the applicant, Charleston Homes. This is a 272-lot preliminary plat. These are all single-family lots on the southwest corner of 204th and Fort. We were unanimously approved by the planning board. The planning staff has recommended this preliminary plat. We have either met or are able to meet all the conditions of their letter of recommendation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Liquor, item number 20, Hyatt Place, Omaha Downtown, 540 South 12th Street, Class C liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 20 is today. Are there any proponents? Please come down.
He's here.
John, just open 540 South 12th Street for the Hyatt. General Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gernat? Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 21, Vino Moss, 14450 Eagle Run Drive, Class C liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 21 is today. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is John Langworth. I'm at 808 North 159th Circle, and I am the primary owner of Vino Moss LLC. We are looking to open a wine store at 14450 Eagle Run Drive. This is in the Greyhawk Point Shopping Center. It's a mixed-use development that has currently both retail stores, restaurants, bars, exercise studios, a lot of different types of items there. We're looking to open a retail store in a location that previously housed a retail store up until about three months ago. Here to ask her, answer any questions that she might have about our store.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Are there any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city councilman calls an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Removed consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 22 and 23 were held on September 17th. Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're both passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number 24 through 34 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
They're all adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant, the city council rule 7H, due to no meeting being held October 15th, agenda items number 35 through 37 shall be laid over four weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant, city council rule 70, the public hearing agenda items 38 through 40 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second reading is item number 41, which is ordinance approving a real estate financing loan agreement between the city and Integrated Realty Resources DBA, the Nottinghams, to implement the Nottingham at Gifford Park Tax-Incentive Financing Real Estate Project Plan located at 3304 Burt Street, and we have an amendment.
Public hearing on item number 41 is today. Proponents, Ms. Hadley?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
What is the amendment, Bridget?
The amendment is essentially to change the base year from the 2012 to 2013. What happened is, this year, the 2013 base assessed value decreased below the value for 2012. So by extending or moving the base year to 2013, that just moves the start of the TIF clock, the 15-year clock, from starting in 2012 to starting in 2013. So the, still a 15-year clock, but it just moves that clock out. But it also will give the TIF a chance to pay off earlier because there will be more, an opportunity to receive more of an increment.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Milton?
I have just one question, one thing. We're not changing the TIF amount?
Correct.
At all. It'll just pay off sooner?
Yes.
More than likely it will, because when you decrease that base value, that just gives you more excess ad valorem. And in more, in more cases than, than not, that means that there'll be more tax revenues coming in toward that TIF, and it'll pay off sooner than anticipated.
And have they started this project yet?
Yes, they have. Yes.
Is this something that you've done before, coming in after the project's already started and the TIF's already been approved, coming in and asking for an adjustment?
That has happened, but it's just, this project was actually, the project plan was approved last year, and they had some change in ownership. And so it took a little longer for them to negotiate the agreement. So the redevelopment agreement actually would have been approved last year, but because of some changes in ownership, it took them a little longer to negotiate the TIF redevelopment agreement. So we're just getting that done now.
Okay, and, and forgive me, can you tell me when, when this was, when this last TIF was approved?
The redevelopment plan was approved last year. I don't recall exactly the date, but it was last year, probably in the spring or summer of last year.
Okay, so, and I just want to make this clear, because, I mean, I guess what would, what would stop future landowners or developers from coming back every time we have a TIF, coming back a year later after the project's already been started, and then requesting that we give them another year? Could you, I mean, could you explain what's different about this project from any other TIF?
Yeah. Yeah, the only, yeah, the only difference is, in this particular situation, since we hadn't negotiated the agreement in each of the TIF redevelopment agreements, we will state when the base year begins and when the, we call the division date year. We state when that happens. So since we hadn't gone to the agreement yet until now, that's what gave me the opportunity to state that. And because of the change in the values, that's what gave me the opportunity to say, okay, there's been a change, and I could go back to the owner and say, do you want the TIF clock to start now or later? And take advantage of the, having a little more increment. So that can happen actually at any point in time, just because of when the Douglas County assessors will set the values. And if they're, the values are protested by the owners.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jerem?
And usually what you'll see is, the redevelopment agreement and the TIF process go through, and then the clock expire on a developer who decides not to go forward in here. You have a unique situation where they found a new investor to come try to resurrect the project. And that new investor would have, although I wasn't a part of this discussion, I would imagine the discussion, discussion went somewhere along the lines was, well, the old one hadn't started. Can I get a fresh clock to take this project over and therefore complete it? So that's the, that's why we don't, right. And that's the uniqueness of this one. Normally, if the project dies, the clock runs on the time that the planning department gives them, and they move on. In this case, they found another investor who's willing to take it over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
Yes, I have a question. And you're saying this is unique, doesn't happen very often. Well, I can remember not too long ago arguing in the legislature that these are some of the rules, reasons why they wanted to change some of the ideas behind TIF because of the latitude that's been given.
Well, there was, in 2011, there was a change that you were probably aware of, or probably part of that decision.
Yeah, probably was.
The amendment to the Nebraska Community Development Law, which allowed us to change when the TIF clock starts. So because of that, it used to happen, soon as the project plan was approved, the TIF clock would start. Then in 2011, when the legislature changed, actually amended a provision in the community development law, it allowed more flexibility to the municipalities to set when that TIF clock starts. So we elected here in Omaha to have that coincide with when the TIF redevelopment agreement is negotiated. So that's why we have that flexibility to, at this time, now that we're negotiating the, the agreement, to, to go ahead and set when the base year is and then when the TIF clock starts.
You're bringing back old memories. Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. No further lights.
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
328.
Thanks.